Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen. Apologize for being late. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. All together, I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Aye, the United States of America, into the republic, with which it stands, and nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Open comments, Vice Chairman, Angelo?
Uh, no, I wanna, we have the Police Department here tonight, so I'd like to get moving on that.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, I'd like to share what I think is some good news with everybody, which is that, it feels to me like Nahant's on the right path. Tony's been working really hard for the past year, and a lot of volunteers have been stepping in and stepping forward, and a year ago it felt like we were a little lost in the wilderness, and I think with the help of Tony and Zach and all the town employees and all the citizens, and of course with the taxpayers stepping up and passing the override, we're really in a position to move Nahant in the direction that I think we all want it to go. So, you, as you look around town, you see some small stuff starting to happen, but you know, plans are in place for some of the bigger stuff. Definitely some challenges still ahead. At the end of this month, we should have a pretty good assessment of where we are with the water and sewer system. That's gonna, you know, there's some bills coming due, but you know, we at least will be armed with the information we need to make smart choices to protect the tax dollars. We had a joint Board of Selectmen, FinCom, and Town Administrator meeting a couple weeks ago, where we laid out a plan for the next several months heading into town meeting, set some milestones, and felt really good to be collaborating and, you know, making sure we're again taking good carrier tax dollars. I think just today we got another grant from the Fire Department, which was great news. I think Tony's being creative in how he looks at things, not necessarily just doing things the same old way. You know, how can we get more bang for your buck, for your tax dollar? Is there another, is there a way we can get better services? So I just wanted to let everybody know that, at least in my view, we're on the right path, and please be patient, and please continue to be patient and positive, and hopefully be part of the solution, because we're heading in the right direction.
Great. It is with great pleasure. Ross, please come up. Congratulations. Shake your hand. This citation is to Roz Puleo for her outstanding work, the Police Department, and other departments as well. I want to present you with this citation for the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of the town. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, Richie.
And I've got also the House of Representatives. I won't read the citation, but it's, this is to, hereby known that all Massachusetts House of Representatives, and sincerest congratulations to Roz Puleo, in recognition of her retirement and more than twenty years dedicated public service to the town in Nahant.
Well, thank you.
I want to congratulate you, and I see the police officers here too.
Aye too, Roz.
You know, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
I'd like to first say thank you to Roz for her dedication to the police department for many years. She was willing to do what it takes. She was giving me my prayers, a complete sheet with all things I didn't know, and Roz is one of the most in the know, so she helped me. She comes through for two solid years, so if you are any of mine, I'm happy for her. I want to thank her, and I want to thank her for her dedication, her passion, and just her commitment to the police department of the town. She knows this town better than anyone, and certain, we get certain phone calls in certain places, and we want to look for Roz, who waits for her, and in the middle of the ocean, she always says it. So, we love you, Roz, and we love staying here, and you will always be a hot dog family, you know that? So, you're gonna throw us open whenever you need it, and she's working on her person, so that's all that matters. Back in the back, we really appreciate it.
All right, I want to say to you, the Police Department, you count on us to themselves extremely much, but one of the best police departments in the whole eastern part of the state. And under the direction of Chief Wyatt, who has no problem, and is needed by example. He's out there, he gets it, he gets it, won't pay any taxes, what they do, he doesn't owe us anything. Doesn't pay any taxes when he wouldn't do, and every single one of these officers is well-known in the town, and knows the town very well, is very, very personable to all the people in the town. Thank you everybody for allowing me to wear it, to help out and battle out of this trauma. Going to someone's house, gathering, having lots of things here, I just sit down and listen to somebody who's in distress or needs something in their pocket. They're all there, they're all available, and town actually considers itself probably the happiest town this whole year.
Thank you for coming up. We, my envelope's not here to give you the two lifetime, for your husband and you, lifetime stickers, all right? You'll get those, we will have those, all right? That's important.
And I think it's only fair that Richie bake you a cake.
Yeah, he'll bake a cake, hello?
Because you're always baking the cakes.
Anytime you need one.
Beautiful. Thank you, Roz. We're all being over here. Right here? Yeah, that's fine. Roz, get me over here. Get that camera.
Let me sit this way.
Yeah.
That'll look official.
Yes. Get in close here.
Don't sit down.
No, yeah, don't. Yeah, you'll have to call Pudge to get me up.
Three, one, two, three. All right, not silly, just kidding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richie. Be your own.
Okay.
Thank you, Roz. Thank you, Roz.
Thank you, Roz.
Congratulations, Anthony, a free sticker for life.
Your life's gonna change.
The Hazardous Race Collection Day is Saturday, October nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, from eight AM to twelve PM. And it's hosted at two fifty Commercial Street in Lynn. Nahant Swim is hosting the annual Ocean Conservatory Global Beach Cleanup Day. It's a great thing to clean up our beaches, Saturday, September twenty-first. This is, this is coming, eleven AM to three PM. And you meet at the lifesaving station. We requested a breakwater at Willa Road and Osh Coast Guard too, so to prevent the high tide, and Tony's working that with the Corps of Engineers. We got a whole process we have to go through to get that, so we put that on the, on the way to go. Next, I'll approve the instant motion to approve the minutes from June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Motion?
Okay, I move the Board of Selectmen's motion to approve the meeting minutes from June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been seconded, further discussion? Hearing then all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 New business, the tax classification hearing?
Mr. Chairman, why don't we skip that for now? They're scheduled, the posted time is seven thirty for that hearing, so let's keep going, and then we'll recess to that.
Okay. We've got to approve a event request for the PTO-sponsored outdoor movie night, Friday, September thirtieth, at seven fifteen PM, behind the Nahant Fire Station. That's coming up, which would be good. Next on the agenda is the National Grid position on the sixty-
Let me, uh, we have an event request first.
Okay.
I move the Board of Selectmen's motion to approve this PTO-sponsored outdoor movie night to be held at Flash Road, on Friday, September twentieth, at seven fifteen PM.
Can I ask a question about it?
Well, hang on for a minute.
We're doing this first. Second?
Motion's been made, a second, further discussion? You want to have, what's-
I just want, I, Alice Court, Seven Valley Road. I suspect this was scheduled before the report of West Nile virus occurring on Nahant, and I know a lot of communities are changing their outside activities in the dusk time because of the mosquito issue, so I don't know if that was taken into consideration. I'm only, I think it's otherwise a great idea, but I wonder if the PTO was aware of that information.
It was brought to the town, the event request was brought to the town before the discovery of West Nile virus. We're gonna continue to approve the event request and let the PTO decide. You know, they don't have to have it, they can decide to postpone if they want, or bring it indoors.
Okay.
Why we have to vote?
Yeah, motion?
Motion's seconded.
Motion, I mean, seconded. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'm up to the ongoing business. The National Grid, are they here? On the pole, down at sixty-five Pond Street? Will you straighten that out, let's all handle?
No, we have to-
We have to, there is still a petition in front of the board for approval to put the pole on town property. Last Board of Select meeting, board voted to continue that until tonight. We were expecting National Grid to be here, but I don't see them. Over the last two weeks, I don't know if National Grid has had any conversation with the homeowners, with the homeowner that the pole, the property sits on, or the neighbor. But I reach out to National Grid myself. I've been out there and talked to each of the neighbors, I think some of the board members, as board members have as well. And it seems like a potential compromise here is that the pole be moved on to town property, splitting the property line of the two abutters. Ms. Lee has offered to allow for the anchor to be put on her property. We would like, one of the conditions to be included in this, if the board wishes to, is to require the National Grid take on all financial responsibility involved in moving the pole, including moving the underground conduit that runs to the Rean Sterna's property. And lastly, that it be placed on the grass portion of the public property so that it doesn't interfere with the width of the paved sidewalk. So that's, that motion has been written up for the board, if that's, if the neighbors want to speak, or if the board wants to take that on, it's in front of you. Maybe we want to read the motion, in case there's some, you have some comments after hearing the motion?
Wait, wait, hold on. Are you all finished? You've negotiated that with the neighbors already?
I've spoken with the neighbors individually. I, like I said, I did reach out to National Grid, and also asked them to consider paying for all costs associated with moving the pole. I haven't heard back from them yet, I don't know, we don't know if the conditions that the board, if the board adds conditions to this approval, if it will, if it has legal ground to really hold them to it, but we're certainly applying the pressure on our end as well, to National Grid to pay for it.
Mr. Board, got any questions to the Town Minister? Any questions?
I might have some.
Oh, yeah, yep. Did you want to say something?
Do you want to read the motion first, or do I speak now?
We can make the motion now.
If we read the motion, you'll have a little more information, and then you can tell your response accordingly.
Josh, you want to read the motion?
So the motion is, I move that with the following three conditions. The Board of Selectmen vote to approve the petition submitted by National Grid to relocate one existing pole, P fifteen, approximately eighteen feet south of existing P fifteen location at sixty-five Pond Street. The conditions are, one, National Grid shall take full fiscal responsibility associated with moving the pole, including but not limited to any costs associated with relocating any affected property owners, underground, laterals, conduits, cables, wires, fixtures, etc. Condition two, National Grid shall place the new relocated pole in the grass on town property just in front of the property line splitting sixty-one and sixty-five Pond Street, and not take away any space from the existing paved area of the sidewalk. And third condition, National Grid shall place the anchor for the new relocated pole within the boundaries of sixty-five Pond Street upon National Grid's receipt of that property owner's written authorization.
Motion's been seconded?
I'll second it for discussion.
Discussion. Discussion. Go ahead, Enzo.
No, no, yeah, Mr. Rean Sterna wants to speak.
You got any discussion?
Nope.
Go ahead.
Mark Rean Sterna, 61 Pond Street. Uh, my discussions with National Grid are, I got an email today and they said that I'm gonna bear the cost of moving my wires.
I'm sorry?
They said that I would have to bear the cost of moving the underground wires. That was the response of their email when I said, who, who covers the cost of this? And they said, the homeowner, the customer. So I don't know how you can, I don't know, I hope that has weight, but I'm not sure what it does. And I don't see why I should have to bear the cost of moving something that I don't wanna move. It's a perfectly good pole. It's not condemned. It doesn't need to be moved. It, it impacts other neighbors as well, but, um, if they told me that I'm bearing the cost of it, I'll fight this no matter how I have to.
Okay, thank you.
Helen Sis, 64 Pond Street. I'm the forgotten neighbor. Um, I am not on the side where the pole is located, so legally, I have no say as to what's happening with the movement of that pole. But if that pole is moved, I'm the neighbor that's most visually impacted because the wires will no longer come into my property at, off to the side. It will come across my front door, the front lawn, to where the feet is into my house. I've walked the streets a lot these past few weeks, looking at how people, how these, uh, wires go into people's homes, and it's usually perpendicular, or it's the closest corner to the pole, I mean, the closest corner of the house to the pole. Mine would not be. This pole will be center of my home and it will cut across the front of my home, not only making it an eyesore, but devaluing the property.
I was under the understanding they were gonna just take the pole and just bring it out. Are they gonna move it halfway down? Compromise it halfway down?
Eighteen feet.
They move it 18 feet to the property line. Uh, this.
Okay, so it's gonna, so.
This is actually, the reason they do that, part of the policy is so that if homeowners choose to go with underground conduit, they don't have to cross over to their neighbor's property in order to connect to the pole. So they put it at the property line.
I think, I don't.
This is, um, I'm sorry.
I think the guy explained it.
She's across the street.
Right, I know. I think the guy explained it, though, that the wires won't come from the pole. They'll come from the middle. I think they tie them off and then it just comes straight like they would before.
I have, I have never seen that. I looked all through Nahant, trying to find that kind of a setup, and it is not, from where I've seen, it there, it doesn't exist in Nahant. And so I wanna be assured that it will continue to come from the wires where the wires are coming now because if it moves 18 feet, it does cut over in front of my home.
The home, I, I think the home next door to you, that is on the corner of Nahant and Pond, their service line actually connects, you know, in the span, not at the pole.
Comes from the pole?
Right.
There's a lot of them around, if you look. Uh, I know, I mean, they can do that. That's not a problem.
It is, yeah, they can do that, yeah.
I have that in writing. I don't wanna have it.
No, and you can. We can, we can make them do that. But I mean, it's a compromise. I think.
I think you could.
Mrs. Lee has offered to put the anchor under a yard. I mean, and I don't see anywhere on the deed where it's, it's deeded, a deeded pole or a deeded access, um, to run the underground wires. I don't see that anywhere. So I, I don't know if there's a, I don't see that.
Um, page two of the deed.
Oh, excuse me, hang on, hang on.
I don't see it. I don't see where it says you can put underground wires on someone's property. I just, I just don't see it. And I've looked over the deed a couple of times. Off, it's, I think, leave yourself, set me out three of them.
Well, by moving the pole to town property at the split of the two property, at the property line, the new conduit would be completely on.
On his property, right.
His property and not on the neighbor.
So that doesn't make any sense. National Grid's gonna have to move the pole. The wires are there. Why wouldn't they just splice them in? I don't, I don't understand why they refused you. They're gonna move the pole.
Yes.
To your property line. It's actually gonna shorten the distance of the wiring.
They have to dig up the entire conduit to move it.
Right, or run new conduit. But whichever way, the point is, is that with this condition that's on, within your motion, is that they would remain with underground conduit. It would just now be at the cost of National Grid.
If I may interrupt here, there is nothing that says my wires are illegal. They are presumed legal. There's an allegation that there was a trespass, but they're presumed legal. There's a document that was filed with my deed, second page, right after the deed, that said Winnie Hodges approved all of our building plans. The pole was on her property and we discussed with her where our stuff was coming. I have a legal opinion that tells me that that's accurate.
It has to be an easement, I, I think.
It's an easement, it's an easement by necessity or a constructive easement. They exist and they exist in the land court. I've had two lawyers tell me that I'm on solid ground on this. And an allegation is not anything that you can act upon unless it's been adjudicated in the courts. It's just an allegation. And you can't use that as a basis for your decision.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we work on this with them? We've made the motion. We've, we've, we can accept it. And then we can tell National Grid, sure, you can move the pole. This is where you're gonna put it. But you're gonna have to put the underground conduit. You're gonna have to attach it. I mean, the town.
That's what, that's.
The town can certainly pressure them to do it.
That's what this motion states.
So what the town pressure them to do it? I mean, she's graciously gonna, she's gonna put the, the tie wire on her yard.
It's already on her yard.
I understand that. But she don't want it in her yard. She don't want nothing in her yard.
She bought it with it on her yard. That's what she paid for.
Without an easement.
Excuse me, excuse me, one at a time. Are you finished, Mark?
Unless somebody has another question for me, I guess I will be. Um, an allegation, I'm gonna repeat it. You can't make your decision based on an allegation. You can't use that as any basis for anything. It's an allegation and an allegation only. It's up for the courts if we go to land court on this.
There, Mr. Rean Sterna, there, as we spoke about, there, what's in front of the board is whether or not they wanna approve the new pole to be on town property. It's not about what your conduit does on your neighbor's property or anything.
It was mentioned by a selectman, so I have to respond to it.
Well, the compromise here is to have National Grid install new conduit underground and they pay for it.
As long as they, as long as I, as long as I don't have to pay for it, um, I, I can.
Let's try it.
Talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we.
We'll talk about it.
But the way this motion is written is trying to help you not have to pay for it.
All right.
So I think it's the best the town can do for you and for Ms. Lee personally, is my opinion.
Okay, let's try this first, Mark, all right? I think it's a, it's a good idea. The motion's been made. Now we'll put the ball in their court and see what they have to say. National Grid.
Are they coming tonight?
I don't see them here.
What happens when they send me a bill?
They already said they're not gonna pay for it.
They, they, we, we're gonna discuss that with them. We're gonna tell, we're gonna talk that.
The typical, the standard. I don't know who you were emailing with.
Robert Coulter.
So the standard of National Grid is that if you want underground conduit, it would be at your cost.
Which I already paid for.
Right, but we are above, we're, we're speaking to folks above, I assume, whoever you were emailing with. This is a negotiated, uh, approval, so it's, I'm sure he was responding to you with the standard response. We're trying to negotiate something above and beyond that.
And, and let me just say this. This is, don't forget, this is an existing pole.
Exactly.
So it's their responsibility. She's saying she doesn't want it on her yard. They're gonna move it. So now it should be up to them to move everything.
I, I agree with that line of thought.
So let's try that. Let's, let's try that first.
Okay.
All right? That's what I say, so.
Thanks.
You know, I, I don't, we're given a conditional approval. I mean, if National Grid doesn't have, doesn't meet those conditions and install the pole on town property, they're gonna have an issue with the town. Cause you, we're, we're, the approval is based on these condi, conditions. So I think we're in a good spot. And the last time I spoke with, um, our government affairs connection at National Grid, it sounded like they were willing to work with us. So I'm confident that this is gonna work.
It gives us, you know, it's, provides a little bit of leverage that, you know, maybe as an individual, you know, the property owner wouldn't have, so.
And if you want to amend this motion to include the other, uh, I'm sorry, I forget, I didn't catch your name. 64, to include, um.
Tie in the wires straight across.
Yeah, maybe no change to the existing service line, direction of the existing service line to 64 Pond Street.
So we'll make that amendment.
Okay. Motion's been made to amend it. Second?
Seconded.
Motion's been seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, amendment carries.
I don't need to speak right now. I just wanted a point of clarification.
Excuse me, go ahead.
I was appreciative, it took some time, but I was appreciative to National Grid that they looked thoroughly through their documentation for the pole that was put in by New England Telephone, I think back in the early 60s, so it's, it's had a, a long lifespan already. And they found no documentation of, um, a certified legal easement to put the pole there. So they graciously said, yes, we will, we need to move the pole. And I was appreciative that they understood that. And what I wanted to make, maybe a point of clarification, um, when we all bought these lots by Winnie Hodges, she had a set of stipulations called covenants that we had to follow if, when, when and if we were building. It was mostly about the construction of the building and the, um, so, um, I think what Mark is referring to when she, he says approval, she had to sign off on seeing his building and seeing that it was the proper square footage and that it had, um, that it, that it was made of wood, et cetera. But she did not, um, she may have been told about, I'm gonna put underground wires and they're gonna cut across, but that was not legally binding in an easement. And that's why, really, that's very important to me that those underground wires come off my property so that I can safely install my fence and we can live our own way. So I hope, I hope that National Grid will, um, help you out with that. But I think that it's important to make that distinction between her signing off on her building covenants and writing a legal binding easement, which was not in either his deed nor mine, so that's.
Okay, so now it's, uh, excuse me?
Tax classification.
Yeah, go ahead.
Now that the pole is going to be moved, I would, um, request that the board consider, um, perhaps not, um, taking down the light on that pole. It's not at an intersection. It's not a safety issue. And it would help moving Nahant toward a, um, light pollution-free, um, environment. And, um, so it's something I'd like you to all consider, if that, and when that pole moves, that there's not a light placed on that pole.
Is, is there a light on there now?
There is one right now, yes.
I think we'd have to look at the lighting schedule on that one. I, I, you know, I'm not in favor of taking down streetlights. That's a very, very difficult intersection, that whole area, people going to church and coming in early in the morning.
But it's not at the intersection.
No, I understand where it is. It's coming around that corner, people coming up that street. And, uh, especially the late masses, you know, 4 o'clock. It's pitch black, and that's a tough, tough area, so we're gonna, I, I would have to think hard and long on the streetlights, on that.
Has to change because it lights up my whole house.
Well, again, uh.
Not the street.
We can't, we can't, you know, again, these poles and streetlights, you know, we can't approve, we can't please everyone, you know, okay?
No, I understand, but since it is moving, I thought this would be an opportunity to consider.
You've got the wires running across in front of your house already, so.
Exactly, so why not light it up with a spotlight?
Well.
Well, with the green light, green communities, uh, LED streetlight conversion grant that we're pushing towards.
Right.
Will be less light, more directive light, and it may help, but it's something that we can take a look at.
Good. We are looking for that, for the, uh, to put all, make Nahant all LEDs, so.
And directive lighting, so it doesn't pollute, um, you know, unnecessary areas.
I'll get to the Legion in a minute, okay? We got a, a 7:30 is passed at. The tax classification hearing?
Said you need to open that hearing.
Yes, I, I move, I'll entertain a motion to open up the tax classification hearing with the Board of Assessors.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made. Second by Josh. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Madam Chairman. How are you?
That time of year?
Do you wanna sit up here, Sheila, so we can?
Thank you for, um, having the assessors come and, um, see you tonight about setting, um, the residential factor for this evening for the fiscal year 2020 tax rate. So in your book, you do have the LA 5 form, and there are some motions you do have to make. I will tell you in advance that I do not have the excess levy capacity and therefore we will have to continue the hearing. And I have a suggested date of, I think it's October the 17th. That's a Thursday.
Yes.
Yeah. So we did, um, the assessments are all approved. New growth is approved. $56,691 in new growth this year. That's about 7% more than the past average three years, so that was a good year for us. Okay, so.
I want to stand a motion to approve the residential factor. Josh?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve resident, a residential factor of one and not adopt a residential exemption or a small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2020.
Motion's been made. Second?
A seconded, discussion.
Second, discussion.
So can you explain briefly what this all means? Basically the same tax rate for residential, commercial, and?
Industrial, yes. And open space, yes. So we are made up of 98% residential, 2% commercial industrial and personal property.
And that tax rates uniform across all those?
Yes, all the different classes of property, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions to the board?
No, I mean, no.
And we have historically, forever, always had one tax rate.
So we're not actually, um. I don't think it's actually, we're gonna continue this, correct?
And so on October the 17th, when we meet again, um, you will have to probably go back to Tony's, um, computer afterwards, sign in into the Department of Revenue's gateway system to complete the process. The same with the Board of Assessors. They'll have to do their side, too. And then the tax rate hopefully will be set, you know, reasonably soon, right after that date.
Okay, the motion's been made and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This hearing will continue to October 17th, 2019, at which time the Board of Assessors will inform the board of the excess levy capacity for the current year fiscal, uh, 20.
Right. And by then, we should have also know what the tax rate will be.
Yes, we should give that because that's important.
Right, and then that's when we can tell them the tax bills will go out. We can talk about the exemptions, too.
Yes.
Okay.
And the exemptions are for veterans and?
Veterans, elderly, blind, yes.
Yes, excellent.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Josh, you have any questions?
No.
Tony?
All set. Uh, motion to go back into, um, the Board of Selectmen's being.
Yes, motion's been made. A second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming up.
We'll see you again soon.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Thank you to the Board of Assessors. Yes, the Legion.
Uh, Toby Quark from the, uh, American Legion Post 215.
The reason I'm here is to explain a project that we've been planning. It's to have the moving replica of the Vietnam Memorial Wall that's in Washington DC come to Nahant in the summer of two thousand twenty. It's pretty early in our planning cycle, but we have a conditional application that's pending, and we just felt it would be right to get the board's approval before we went ahead with the application to confirm it. A few of the details. The timeframe is not to be made public, but it's generally between June and August of two thousand twenty. The only location that we've determined that can accommodate this demonstration is the Lowlands Ball Field and the parking lot, and then the Veterans Park that's right in front of it. So what I'd like to do is get your feedback, your conditional approval tonight, and then maybe move ahead on approval later, we are pressed sometime. In the next two weeks, I have to respond to them so that they can put us on the schedule.
And the dates are when?
Roughly between mid-June and mid-August of two thousand twenty, next summer.
Next summer.
But these people are scheduling, you know, their locations already.
And it would be weekend or week, it would be during the weekend or during the week?
The actual event is four days, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then it takes a day to set up, day to take down, maybe two days on both sides of it, so it's about a week.
There's a, there's a physical display, right, and then there's an event where there's people in attendance?
Yeah, it's a physical display, it's about three hundred and twenty-five feet in the shape of a chevron, just like the wall down in Washington DC, it's about a half-size replica. And then there's four events each night, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, something like a memorial service. And we're eligible to do other things like having a dinner for Vietnam veterans, Vietnam Ameri veterans, there's a wide range of things we can do that we haven't even started planning yet.
So, okay, go ahead. The dates though, I want to make sure, that's the middle of softball season, am I right? We're gonna have to shut down Lowlands for those four dates for this wall, I think it's a great idea, by the way.
Yeah. We hashed that idea around, and we think that given enough lead time to the leagues, they can probably fence out that week between.
We could use the Babe Ruth Field for the softball field, and they can, you know, go up there and maybe, but during the four days, you have it out there, I think it's a wonderful idea, by the way, it's a great idea. The costs, the cost associated with this is ten thousand dollars?
About.
So people could donate to bring this wall.
Gonna be a fundraising effort, and we're fairly confident that we have some donors that are already stepping up, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're gonna have more, so I think this is, this is, this is, to have the Vietnam Wall come to Nahant is huge, very big, and I, it's gonna be, it's gonna be great, and especially for this coming year.
Well, this is also our one-hundredth anniversary of the American Legion.
Yes.
And it's somewhere close to the date that the wall can come here, so that would be.
It's the one-hundredth anniversary of American Legion, am I correct?
Exactly.
Yes. Timing is perfect.
Yep.
So I think this is a great idea, and if they, people that are at home, if they want to donate to the American Legion to pay, you know, offset this cost, they just send a check to the American Legion and put on the check for the wall, the Vietnam Wall.
Well, there's actually, the, the organization, Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall.
Right.
Fund, they supply you everything, they, they even have a sample of the donor sheet, you know, with American Legion heading on it and the EIN number and all that, and then, so there's, all of this has been done about six hundred times.
Right.
So they're, they have a tremendous amount of administrative support behind us, so the, the whole fundraising probably won't start until January.
Yeah.
I mean, if the people want to give us money for that, we'll take the check.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, it would probably be better if we, the American Legion received the check and so they can, you can reimburse them, so that'd be a good idea, if you can get that on the, you know, the, give us closely these dates down there so we could shut that park down.
Right.
And then we got plenty of parking, and it's perfect, it's a perfect location for it, and.
Well, we have the Legion Hall, we have the Veterans Park, and then the parking lot and the Lowlands, so that gives us a string.
Oh, yeah, no, that thing's, how, how long is it, two hundred and thirty feet, or was it?
Huge.
Huge, that's huge.
It's three hundred and twenty-five feet total.
Three hundred and twenty-five, yeah.
So, so, but it's in an angle, so it's really about three hundred feet from corner to corner, and it's about, I think it's about twenty feet high.
It is, yeah, do you gonna, are you gonna put up tents to cover it, to protect it, or, yeah, okay, I just think, you know.
There are some details we have to hash out, some workarounds that we have to talk to, but if, this is right now a conditional application, it's not approved by them or by us, but I'd like to get some feedback and, and at some point arrange to get a vote and an approval soon, and I'm not sure how you can do that, but.
You might, we might want to have to supply a cruiser to park down there to watch this wall, make sure someone doesn't try to deface it in any way, you know, this, this is a sacred wall, I want to make sure there's nothing happening.
There's a few, you know.
For people that haven't seen it, I've actually seen it twice, they had it at Fraser Field in Lynn maybe five years ago, I have a, my brother-in-law was killed in action in Vietnam, so I've seen it twice, and then I saw it in New Hampshire, and it's very, very moving, and it's a great event, I gotta tell you, it's a great event, it brings a lot of people out to come see it, it's, it's just a good thing, and of course, we have, we already, we have a Nahant kid, Ricky Davis, that's on it, so it's a great event, and I, I think that we should absolutely put this at the top, a top priority. When they can anchor those dates down, let's, let's move on right away.
Absolutely. I'll tell you, they want some authorization, I'll entertain a motion to approve their request to use Lowlands Playground when the dates are fixed.
Yeah.
And then we can, you know, move the softball people out and move them in. Entertain the motion?
So move.
Motion's been made, second?
Second.
Discussion, this is a wonderful idea, and if people want to donate to just make a check out to the American Legion, then you'll reimburse them for the ten thousand dollars.
Exactly.
Right, this is huge, I think you, and I'm very proud of the Legion coming forth on this.
What was the motion, I didn't quite hear it.
Motion is to approve for the request to use Lowlands.
Okay.
Which is a public park, and you're right in the middle of a kind of a softball thing, so, but we can move them, and they can use the Babe Ruth Field on the other side, you know, for those, that four or five days, and you'll have exclusive permission to use Lowlands in and around those dates. All right, we won't fix the dates, we'll get them fixed when it gets a better.
So you can get those dates for us, you know.
And we just follow up with the dates, and then we can, you know, then we'll meet with the police chief, I want to make sure that nothing happens to the wall, okay, there's people, you know.
Exactly.
Make sure we've got security down there for that wall.
All right, thank you very much.
This is a great thing to bring to Nahant.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion's been made, a second, further discussion? This is good, very, very good, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so you got authorization to use the Lowlands Playground to set this all up.
We'll get back with you on the dates and the confirmation.
Sure, absolutely, and tell us, come back and let us know how we can help and inform the townspeople to assist you in this.
That's another thing, for at least a month, we, we need to keep this as a pending application.
Yes.
According to the organizational rules, in turn, they have to make the media announcement, so except for the fact that this meeting is, is a public meeting.
Right.
We can't really go ahead with a lot of publicity until they give us the go-ahead.
Do you need a letter from the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrators to saying that this has been authorized?
I'll find out.
Okay, let us know.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much again. Okay.
Town Administrator Report.
I'm sorry?
Town Administrator Report.
Town Administrator Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, tonight, I want to use part of my time to talk about the open meeting law and specifically meeting minutes. When I first came on as Town Administrator, you, the board emphasized to me the importance of transparency and to make public access one of my top priorities. First, starting back in March of two thousand eighteen, Town Hall added the feature of watching the Board of Selectmen meetings from YouTube. This meant that residents don't need to attend a meeting in person or even watch a meeting from home where they receive the local public access TV channel. It allows people to watch the meeting live from anywhere that you have an internet connection. In fact, just in June, both meetings had over two hundred and fifty people watching on YouTube or came back to take a look at those meetings. Also, the recording of this, of the video gets posted to our website right next to where we have our agenda and our meeting minutes posted, and it's available on YouTube for anyone to reference should they want to know about the dialogue that took place in any of our meetings. Secondly, we worked creatively to request outside funding for improvement to our public access equipment because it is outdated and has been failing for quite some time. Through the advocacy of our state delegation, we have been approved at thirty-five thousand dollar year mark and hope to be embarking on that project in the very near future. Over the last few Board of Selectmen meetings, residents have spoken about meeting minutes being posted. The open meeting law sets the minimum requirements, and we have been striving to go above and beyond them through video broadcasting, video recordings, and with detailed minutes. The Attorney General's Office tells us, one, at a minimum, the minutes, the minutes must state the date, time, and place of the meeting, a list of the members present or absent, and the decisions made and actions taken, including a record of all votes. Two, it is not necessary, when preparing the minutes, to include every question asked or comment made, or to identify every person participating in each discussion. And three, minutes should be approved in a timely manner which will generally be considered to be within the next three public body meetings or within thirty days, whichever is later. We strive to go above and beyond those. Generally speaking, we try to stay within this timeframe and follow a process that within three meetings, we provide the board meeting minutes to review and then approve at the following meeting, for instance, tonight, we approved the June nineteenth meeting minutes, and the board in your binder has the meeting minutes from June twenty-eighth for your review and to be approved at the next meeting. It's important for me to state that we have to balance our desire to go above and beyond the open meeting law requirements with the limited staff and time that we have. The ability to broadcast live and provide video recordings of all of our meetings allows the town to be more transparent than required by the law without taking a significant amount of staff time. Lastly, we will continue to strive to provide detailed meeting minutes in a timely manner and encourage that all committees of the town do, do the same, and to follow these rules and regulations required by the Attorney General's Office. And if there are any questions about the open meeting law or about meeting minutes, there's a wealth of information on the Attorney General's website.
Can I just add something to that?
Sure.
Other boards have to understand that they have to have, take, take minutes, approve them, and post them. Some of them don't, and this is becoming an issue. They also have to realize that, and I know that the town clerk has asked several times some of the committees to take the open meeting law test, they all have to take that test, that should be stressed also. And the minutes are the minutes, that's, that's the meeting, and they just, they have to approve, they have to write them and approve them somehow, I mean, we do, they, they all have to do that. Planning Board, Concom, any, any board, I mean, I'm just rattling off names, but they all have to do that. It's important, open space, because at some point, someone's gonna ask for them, and they have, so I would just reiterate that they need to do that. Thank you, and thanks for supplying the checklist for creating and approving minutes.
I hope to provide, that checklist is right off the Attorney General's website. We are gonna be providing that to each committee chair and hopefully organizing a joint meeting of the chair, people of each committee to be trained on open meeting law and minute-taking in the future, in the near future. Other things on my Town Administrator Report that I didn't get to add to the agenda, but I just wanted to remind folks of the boat hauling days at the Wharf, Saturday, October twelfth, and Monday, October fourteenth. Call Jocelyn Marine at nine seven eight four six two nine seven one seven to schedule an appointment. Also, water and sewer bills will be mailed out tomorrow, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Tony, okay. You guys have anything for me? Do you have anything? Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. Do you have anything? Do you have anything, either one, okay?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion is made to adjourn, second?
For a second. Tony, I'd say the meeting minutes have definitely improved, so thanks to, thanks for having that extra effort put in. The YouTube option's pretty nice, I was away last week, can watch the meeting on YouTube. I'm gonna keep this at a high level, but I want to make sure that this board sets a positive example and respects the contributions of volunteers, and I'm gonna make sure that happens when I'm here. That's all I have to say.
Josh, I've always made sure, usually at least twice a year, of all the volunteers that make this government, the town of Nahant's government work, the volunteers for the various committees, the people volunteering, et cetera. So we've always done that, Josh, we've always sent, I've been on the board. And without their help, now, the Board of Appeals, to the zoning boards, and the appointed boards, you know, the town works in that way, and the many volunteers that, you know, spend a night or two away from their families to go to meetings, FinCom, Conservation Committee, all these committees, that makes the town work.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, and a lot of people volunteer, yeah.
I just want to make sure we treat them with.
I send a thank you out every June, you know, the end of the quarter, thanking them, so I want to let you know that we do that, I've always done that, as the chairman, and thanks to Tony, that Tony makes sure that they're all working. And so, you know, I mean, the many, the many things that you've done for the town. I mean, it's just, the flood plain and things like that, you've done a marvelous job in that area. Okay, motion to adjourn, second, discussion, hearing done, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, good night, thanks. Good night, thanks.